I call to order the March 19th meeting of the Montgomery County Plan Commission. Mr. Linkus, if you'd return the quorum.
Mr. Curl.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Ms. Sharp Robinson.
Here.
Ms. Simkins.
Here.
Mr. Walts. Mr. Workman. Secretary Linkus is here. Vice Chair Foster.
Here.
Chair Rice.
Here.
Have a quorum.
And we have the agenda in front of you. I'll mention that it's an amended agenda. We've switched the order of the public hearings, but other than that, it's...
Move approval as amended.
Motion as second for approval of the agenda. All those in favor, signify with a "A".
Aye.
Those opposed likewise. And tonight, we have three public hearings. The first one is a request by Amazonite LLC for a special use permit to allow short-term tourist rentals within existing single-family dwelling on property located at 940 Nellie's Cave Road. And Ms. Wright, I believe, will give us an...
Good evening. Before you tonight, we have the vicinity maps. On the left, you'll see the star, which is kind of centralized in the county on the outskirts of the town of Blacksburg. That is the location of the site. And on the right is the property in conjunction with the town of Blacksburg, and zoomed in just a little bit. On the left, we have the aerial map showing that little triangular-shaped property. That is the property that has requested the special use permit tonight. And on the right is the zoning map showing the different areas of zoning around the area. In white is the town of Blacksburg, and green is the agricultural, and brown is R2, and in yellow is R3. The request tonight is to allow a short-term tourist rental within an existing 520-square-foot two-bedroom dwelling. The property was unknowingly in violation of the zoning code when the short-term rental operations began three years ago. When the applicant received notification of violation, he promptly contacted staff to work toward bringing the property into compliance. Below is the definition of a short-term tourist rental, which we're very familiar with at this point. And as you also know, supplemental regulations are required to be met for this special use permit request, and those are outlined here, and we're all familiar with those as well. This is the floor plan of the home that shows that it's two-bedroom, one-bath kitchen with a laundry area and living room. There is an outdoor deck there in front of the laundry room and beside the living room that you'll see in the picture. And there on the left is the picture of the two-bedroom, 520-foot square-foot dwelling that also shows that it has well-maintained landscaping. And on the right is the picture of the rear yard with a fire pit. This is an adjacent property, and it's taken from the yard of the subject parcel. The property is a permitted-by-right short-term rental also. The property is Zoned A1, which is why it was not... It did not require a special use permit for a short-term rental. On the left is the view looking away from the town of Blacksburg, and on the right is the view looking toward the town of Blacksburg. The dwelling is served by public water and private septic, and operations permit from the Health Department for two bedrooms for occupant maximum was issued this week. The property is not located in a FEMA flood hazard area. The lot is small at .283 acres and features well-maintained landscaping, and the lot is surrounded by a mixture of zoning districts, including agricultural residential R2 and R3. This is the parking pad, which accommodates two vehicles. The lot was previously permitted to relocate the driveway to the opposite side of the parcel. The permit expired and work was not performed. VDOT did not require that change in location. The owner initiated that process. VDOT has no safety concerns. It takes no exception to this request. Traffic impacts will remain minimal, resulting in no greater intensity in traffic than if it were a permanent residence. Fire safety will be addressed during the zoning and building permitting process. Property is equipped with smoke detectors, fire extinguishers, and safety instructions for guests, and burning will adhere to Virginia forestry laws. Gatherings and parties are not allowed. The property manager is local and available to address any concerns. Quiet hours have been established between 9:00 PM and 8:00 AM daily. Outdoor lighting is limited to the existing porch and front door. No additional lighting has been proposed. The comprehensive plan identifies the lot as residential transition, which usually indicates a stable, low-density residential neighborhoods in close proximity to municipalities. Areas include undeveloped land that has been previously zoned for residential development, and public utilities are limited. There are three goals that are outlined in the comprehensive plan that would be supported by approval of this special use permit. Staff analysis came to the conclusion that the proposed use does meet regulations as outlined in the supplemental regulations. The proposed use remains residential with no more impacts than a full-time residence, which is comparable to traditional occupancy. The property may also be used to provide temporary housing for local individuals facing home repairs, insurance-related displacements, and real estate clients transitioning between buying and selling homes, as it has been used previously. VDOT takes no exception, and the town of Blacksburg voiced no concerns. Staff recommends approval of this request for a special use rent to allow a short-term tourist rental within the existing dwelling on property located at 940 Nellie's Cave Road with the following conditions: Occupancy shall not exceed four occupants. The property shall be registered with the Commissioner/Revenues Office for meals and occupancy taxes. Any applicable permits must be obtained from the Building Department. And all requirements in Montgomery County Code for short-term tourist rentals shall be met prior to the issuance of the zoning permit. All adjoining property owners were notified in accordance with county and state code. A public hearing sign was placed on the property. Legal ads were properly published, and staff has received no comments from the public. However, there may be someone here tonight that wishes to address the commission. I am available for questions, and Mr. Cummings, the applicant, is also here if you would like to answer or ask him any questions.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Thank you, Ms. Wright.
Thank you.
Would the applicant like to speak?
I think Kim did a very good job. Yeah, I don't really have a whole lot to add, except we've been doing it since before the regulations came into place, and I wasn't aware of the change until they notified me, and now I'm here.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll open up the floor for public address on this special use permit. Anyone who would like to address this issue, please come forward. Seeing none, we will close the public address portion and turn it over to the commission for discussion and action. I'll say that we've had several of these come before us, and it seems an appropriate use, and an extensive list of supplemental regulations that we've got in place. It looks like they've met those, but I don't see any problem with it.
I move recommendation of approval.
Second.
Okay, so I've got motion for approval in a second, and we'll ask Ms. Linkus to poll the commission.
Okay, Mr. Curl.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Robinson.
Yes.
Ms. Simkins.
Yes.
Mr. Linkus is yes. Vice Chair Foster.
Yes.
Chair Rice.
Yes.
Our next public hearing is an ordinance, amended section 10-52 of the zoning ordinance to clarify that zoning compliance officers and assistant zoning administrators are authorized to act on behalf of the zoning administrator by adding duties and powers authorized by state law and by updating the criminal and civil violation penalties. And Mr. Cochran's going to present this.
Thank you, yes. We have a little bit of housekeeping with the zoning ordinance in regards to administration and enforcement. So this proposed text amendment was requested by the county attorney, and the proposed text amendment is to clarify that the zoning compliance officer and other positions that support the zoning administrator may administer and enforce the zoning ordinance on behalf of the zoning administrator. It also updates the language to align with the changes of the Code of Virginia and recommendations of the county attorney, and then it also updates criminal and civil penalties utilized by the zoning administrator and their designees in enforcing the zoning ordinance. As part of the 2024 budget, the Board of Supervisors approved the creation of a new position within the county to assist with the zoning administrator with the ongoing task of administering and enforcing the zoning ordinance. Some of the primary duties of the zoning compliance officer position include, but are not limited to, conducting field work, field inspections, writing and sending notice of violation letters, working with property owners to bring the property into compliance with the zoning ordinance, and if necessary, representing Montgomery County in legal proceedings on behalf of the zoning administrator. The proposed text amendments clarify that duly-appointed zoning compliance officers and assistant zoning administrators are authorized to act on behalf of the zoning administrator in the administration and enforcement of the county zoning ordinance. At the recommendation of the county attorney, language is added to address interpretations of the zoning chapter with reference to state code regarding vested rights and modification of a determination made by a zoning administrator. Additionally, language authorized by Virginia Code was added allowing the zoning administrator and his or her agents to request a zoning inspection warrant to enable the zoning administrator and his or her agents to enter a subject dwelling for the purpose of determining whether zoning violations of the zoning ordinance do exist. A reasonable effort shall be made by the zoning administrator and their agents to obtain consent from the owner or tenant of the property prior to seeking an inspection warrant. Lastly, updates to the criminal and civil fines were made to reflect state code. Staff recommends approval of the request for the proposed text amendments to section 10-52 of the Montgomery County Code. Legal ads will run in the news messenger. Staff has received no inquiries related to this request, and additional comments may be received during the public hearing. Are there any questions from me regards to this?
Any questions for Mr. Cochran? Our newly hired zoning compliance officer, have we had that position filled before? Is this a brand-new position?
No, so this is a brand-new position. Laura is actually here. Laura Rogers. We were able to get her from the sheriff's office... We were able to get her from the sheriff's office, and she has been a tremendous help so far, and has been staying very busy and helping me tremendously, so she's been a welcome addition.
Sound great, thank you. Thank you, Jim. So we'll open this public hearing up to the audience for public address. If someone would like to come forward, please. You have three minutes, and if you would give us your name and home address very clearly.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, everybody. My name's Brandon Carlton. My address is 2280 Miles Road. I actually just had a question about the bullet that I saw on here about a warrant. Is that a warrant that's going to be signed by a judge giving this individual the ability to come into my home whether I like it or not? Is that what we're talking about? I just want to clarify, like, is that what we're talking about doing?
Well, it's your time to speak if you'd like to...
I'm just asking the question, like, is that what is meant by a zoning warrant? Like, a warrant that will be signed by a sitting judge of Montgomery County? That's correct?
So we'll try to maybe answer that a little bit later on.
Sure, okay. Thank you, that's all I had. Appreciate it.
Thanks, sir, thank you. If anyone else would like to approach, speak to this issue? Yes, Laura?
Hi, I'm Laura K. Rogers. I am the zoning compliance officer for Montgomery County. I've met you all. To answer Mr. Carlton's question, yes, it is issued by a magistrate and/or a judge per the Code of Virginia.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
If anyone else would like to speak? If not, we'll close the public portion of this public address, public hearing, and open it up for the commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I move the recommendation.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. Any further discussion? It seems appropriate use of the time. If you would call the roll, please.
Okay, Mr. Crowell.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Sharp Robinson.
Yes.
Ms. Simkins.
Yes.
Secretaries, yes. Vice Chair Foster?
Yes.
Chair Rice?
Yes.
In our third and final public hearing is a request by Father and Gay LLC, agent is Balzer and Associates, for an amendment to the 2025 Montgomery County Comprehensive Plan to change the policy map designation of approximately 633 acres of the property. And Ms. Hopkins, will you be leading that?
So I'm going to start us off. We know that there has been quite a bit of confusion, so we want to take the opportunity to try to clarify some things. So a comprehensive plan is a guiding document that outlines the county's vision and long-term goals. Normally, those documents are for a substantial number of years. In our case, 20 years. It provides strategies for achieving objectives, covers key issues such as housing, transportation, environmental impacts, public safety, community facilities, and so forth. What the comprehensive plan does not do, and this is where it gets a little confusing, it does not function as a zoning ordinance, so it is not code. It does not regulate property use. It does not dictate that a specific type of development is to be developed on a property. It does guarantee that development will occur or authorize, it does not guarantee that development will occur, and it does not authorize specific projects. It also cannot anticipate ever future need or technological advancement, as we have found over the years, and it does not prevent development under existing zoning regulations. So it is a guide that we use as we move forward to make considerations for land uses owners bring them forward. So in order to comparison, the rezoning versus the comp plan, this kind of breaks it down. A rezoning does change the property zoning classification, and therefore the uses that are allowed. It does allow the property to be used for different purposes than would be currently permitted, and both require approval through this process. It goes to the planning commission for a recommendation, and then it will go to the Board of Supervisors, who will also hold a public hearing, and then they have the ultimate decision. As far as impacts, a rezoning directly affects what can be built on a specific property. The comprehensive plan amendment does not. It just guides those future land use and rezoning decisions. The timeframe for a rezoning, it's immediate once it's approved. Comprehensive plan amendment, you could have a change and not see any change in that property for many years to come. Public involvement, of course, we want our citizens to be involved. We want them to come out and hear, we want to hear what you have to say. That's why we have these public hearings, and we do that for both. So what we have had, we have two separate applications for the same property, and they will go through a different schedule. One was received after the other. So the first application we received was a comprehensive plan amendment request. The second was a rezoning. Each of these applications is considered and evaluated separately, and we have separate public hearings. So tonight, we're going to discuss the comprehensive plan amendment. The Board of Supervisors' public hearing is tentatively scheduled for April 14th. Details of the rezoning application that we have also received will not be discussed during the evaluation of this application. It's a totally separate evaluation. The rezoning application will be discussed April 9th at a public hearing here, and then the Board of Supervisors' public hearing will be May 12th. Any changes to those dates for the rezoning, because there is the possibility that it could change, it will be posted on our website. We will also notify all adjoining property owners, so if you received a notice in the mail about tonight's meeting, you should receive a notice about the rezoning as well, and any changes you will receive in the mail also. Like I stated before, the rezoning details will be discussed during the public hearings for the rezoning. And with that, I will turn it over to Justin Sanders.
Thank you, Bree. Here on your vicinity maps, you can see that the property is located in the eastern portion of the county, in the Ellison-LeFayet area. The zoom in there shows you the property. It's roughly bounded there between Seneca Hollow Road and Graham, just to orient you further, and this is on the opposite side of Route 11460 from the sod farm, to further orient you. Here are your aerial maps showing you the parcels that are part of the request. They're on the left, and you notice again, Eastern Montgomery Elementary School is sort of in the middle of these properties. The map on the right there is showing you the existing policy map designations. Everything you see there in green is currently resource stewardship. The light blue there, and everything that is hatched is within the existing Ellison-Lefayet Village. The orange is medium-density residential village land use. The light blue there is civic land use, and that contains the two schools there for the village. So a summary of the application for you, approximately 633.72 acres are what are being considered as part of this comprehensive plan amendment. Split there on the 63372 acres, that's going to be 307.22 acres further designated as open space in the Ellison-Lefayet Village Plan, and 326 acres further designated as medium-density residential within the Ellison-Lefayet Village Plan. This is the proposed future land use designation. You can see the area there that's proposed to be part of village expansion, and then the breakdown further there between the two village land uses, showing the open space area, and then the medium-density residential area. So this gives you sort of the bigger context of the existing village boundaries. You can see everything there that's in the solid is part of the Ellison-Lefayet Village. The small portion, the tag down there next to the hatched area, that's the location of Eastern Montgomery Elementary School, and then the cross-hatched area there is the proposed village expansion and what that would look like in the context of a larger village. So a little bit of background on the property. March 10th of 2008, the Board of Supervisors amended 20 acres of the property owned by Father and Gay at the time to village expansion, further designating it as a civic land use in the village to facilitate the construction of Eastern Montgomery Elementary School and extend public utilities to the edges of those sites. In 2021, the property owners requested removal of approximately 606 acres from the agriculture and forestal district number nine. That was approved by the Board of Supervisors on October 25th of 2021. And then, most recently in 2022, the applicants requested a special use permit to allow a five-megawatt solar-scale community solar facility on a 35-acre portion of the property. The planning commission did recommend denial of that application to the Board of Supervisors, but the application was withdrawn prior to the Board of Supervisors' public hearing. So just a bit of background on the difference between the two policy map designations. Resource stewardship areas are generally rural areas with high resource value. That relates to the soil types that are present on site, as well as any environmental concerns. They're generally preserved for future development through both public and private conservation efforts. Those could be conservation easements, historic easements, agriculture and forestal districts, or other preservation strategies. They often include national forest land, state lands, private preserves, and undeveloped farmland, and generally have a slope of 25% or greater on the slopes on site. Whereas with village expansion, those are the natural expansion areas for the villages, are generally served by current or planned public water and sewer extensions. They do provide an alternative to scattered rural residential development, and they have the opportunity to enhance the vitality of existing villages and provide for compatible uses for both employment and residential needs. After we adopted the comprehensive plan in 2004, the county established a policy for periodically revising the policy area designations. That ordinance number is referenced for you there. This policy allows the comprehensive plan amendment to be initiated by a landowner, by the planning commission, or the Board of Supervisors. These requests are generally accepted in February and August of each year. We received this request in that February window. So the policy that was adopted in PLU 111B says that the request should be considered for one of the following criteria if one or more of these are met. One, the subject property was misinterpreted or overlooked in the comprehensive plan. Two, conditions have changed substantially since the last comprehensive plan update necessitating a change, and that can be anything from changes to land use or economic conditions. Three, an undue hardship exists which substantially limits the use of the property. Or four, that the amendment will effectively aid in the implementation of other goals of the comprehensive plan. So in staff's analysis of the proposal, it appears that two criteria are met to justify the change. The first criteria, the conditions have changed substantially since the last comprehensive plan update, and two, the implementation of other comprehensive plan goals. So further in our analysis, looking at changing conditions, when the comprehensive plan was adopted in 2004, public water and sewer service was not readily accessible to the subject properties that would allow any development outside of existing agriculture. The extension of public utilities for Eastern Montgomery Elementary provides an opportunity for connections to sustain residential development in this area. Prior to construction of the two schools in the strand, future residential development was limited by previous school infrastructure. The construction of these facilities increased enrollment capacity in the Shawsville-Ellison Strand following the adoption of the plan in 2004. The construction of the school further expanded the existing village boundary, changing the adjacent land use for this property and the subject property. The Ellison-Lefayet Village has continued to expand westward with the addition of additional commercial and industrial business ventures along the core. Farming operations at Father and Gay have continued to decrease since the comprehensive plan was adopted in 2004, requiring less acreage for active farming by the owners. And resource stewardship, as you'll remember, cited agricultural and forestal districts as one of the primary land types to be included in resource stewardship, and as I noted, much of the land previously held in AFD9 was removed at the request of the property owner. And then the second criteria that staff believes was met, the request to allow medium-density residential on 326 acres provides the potential for additional housing units at a variety of types and sizes in the county, and that's been identified as a need county-wide. And as you'll remember, in our last comprehensive plan, a goal was set that 80% of all growth in the county would occur within the two towns, the village areas, and the urban expansion areas. Looking at some other considerations, I know there has been some concern about the proximity of a proposed development near the Father and Gay estate. Just wanted to give you some facts and figures here. The 1796 structure is individually listed on the National Register of Historic Places. However, National Register listing does not preclude development on a site, and it also does not protect the structure. Only the house itself is listed on the National Register, and the surrounding land is not, nor is it included in any historic district in this portion of the county. Open space provided in the development proposal would provide a visual buffer between the historic residence and any proposed development, and the existing cemetery that's located on the property is within the area that is proposed as open space on the proposal. As noted in the application, open-spaced land would remain in agriculture. If that were to be changed, that would require, from that open-space designation, that would require a new comprehensive plan amendment to come forward to change the village land use designation. Our existing guidelines for resource stewardship allows a development density of .5 to one unit per acre. A medium-density residential density that is allowed is up to five units per acre. However, that does not take into account the construction of any open space, roads, or stormwater areas in development. While a rezoning request follows this request, as Bree noted, the comprehensive plan amendment should be considered independently of the rezoning request. Staff does recommend approval of the amendment to the comprehensive plan land use designation from resource stewardship to village expansion, further designating 307.72 acres as open space and 326 acres as medium-density residential. The application complies with the land use criteria as outlining the county's policy, noting that conditions have changed since the property was updated last in the comprehensive plan, supporting the requested change. Adjacent property owners were notified in accordance with Montgomery County code and the Code of Virginia. Public hearing signs were placed on the property. We placed a total of six signs throughout the property. We've received nine inquiries related to this as of March 17th. All comments that were received by Close of Business on March 17th were uploaded to board docs and sent to the commission. Anything received after March 17th was provided to you in hard copy this evening at your chairs, and we may have some folks that are here to speak this evening as part of the public hearing. With that, I will take any questions that you have. Steve Simonas from Balzer and Associates is here, has a few words for you, and can answer any questions as well.
Thank you. Commission, have any questions for Justin? Would the owner or applicant like to come forward?
Good evening. Steve Simonas, Balzer and Associates, 80 College Street in Christiansburg. Justin, is it okay if I just go back to one of your slides? I think I can just speak to that instead of loading mine. I appreciate everybody's time this evening. Justin did an excellent job running through the application itself, the reason we're here this evening. I did want to touch on just a few items that, again, Justin mentioned, but we've really spent a lot of time looking at this, this property, this comprehensive plan, and the rezoning that Ms. Hopkins mentioned as she started her presentation this evening. So the biggest thing that you all know as planning commissioners, and Justin just spoke to it, is our village areas are our growth areas, urban expansion and our village and village expansion areas. We don't have a lot of them in the county. We've got our seven villages, I believe, scattered across the county. We're seeing growth happen in some of those. We've seen it in Prices Fork. We've seen a little bit of it in Bellevue over the years. Ellison has not seen this type of growth, and that's some of the concern, obviously. Elliston has not seen this type of growth, and that's some of the concern, obviously, from our neighbors. We did have a community meeting we held Monday night to introduce the project to our neighbors. Had a good turnout at Eastern Montgomery, and it hopefully answered a lot of their questions. But the Elliston area itself, the Elliston-Shawsville-Lefayette area, we're seeing growth pushing that direction from Christiansburg, as well as the Salem-Ronocoke area. We know Roanoke County is interested in pushing that development out westward, towards the Montgomery County line, interested in getting water and sewer out that way. And as we looked at areas where we can provide housing, and I'm glad Mr. Sanders brought that up, that is a huge piece that has changed economically since 2004 and 2007, when the village plan was looked at, is our housing demand. Everybody on the dice realizes the housing shortage we're in right now. We have a lot of good developers and builders in the New River Valley that are working hard to do that. You all have seen interest rates, you've seen housing prices, land prices. It's tough to get a, quote, "affordable" home right now in Montgomery County. And as we presented to the neighbors on Monday night, looking in the price ranges that we're trying to shoot for, we can start hitting some of those numbers that we haven't seen in a while, but part of that is getting the comp plan amended first, which is, again, why we're here this evening. So, with the village areas being our growth areas in the county, this piece of property is a great location for those of you that were on the site visit. Most of this property lays very well, so to the point of the forestry or the resource stewardship district having steep slopes, there are some steep slopes in the back of this property, but as we noted, those would be open space and part of those larger estate lots. But a lot of the land really lays well. And again, why this wasn't included initially in the village plan was it was in the ag district, and it also didn't have water and sewer to it. So, when the elementary school, the 20 acres for the elementary school was sold from the Father and Gay family to the county to build that school, part of that agreement was water and sewer. Obviously, we need that for the school to function. So, on your mapping, Eastern Montgomery Lane kind of bends up into the school and dead ends into this property. So, as part of that agreement, water and sewer was stubbed and constructed and stubbed right at that property line for future tie-in for this property. So, that was after the Comprehensive Plan had been updated. So, that was one big piece of this, you know, that has changed those conditions out there. So, I can't say for sure, none of us can, none of us can go back and look at that backwards crystal ball to say if that water and sewer had been there 20-some years ago, would this property have been in village expansion? But the likelihood is better if the water and sewer had been there. It is now, and that's one of the other reasons we felt this is an appropriate time to come and look at a piece of this property, to go as medium-density residential. The other piece is areas of development in that Elliston-Lefayette area are limited. Everything on the opposite side of the main road, 460, out there, most of that land is in floodplain, so that's not developable land for residential. The larger family farms that have been there, there's the Father and Gay farm, and a couple others there on the same side of the road as ours, that could see development in the future. But the entire Elliston-Lefayette Valley down through there can't see the level of development and density that I think is some of the concern. And again, it's important to the Father and Gay family as well to maintain a large chunk of the property as open space. They, this home has been in their family for hundreds of years, generations. So, it was important to them, as we talked to them early in this process, to maintain a large buffer of open space, to protect the house, to protect the historic cemetery on the property. So, that's the reasoning why we have such a large area of open space that's still there. Those are the main reasons that were before you tonight, that we see this as a viable option to move through this Comprehensive Plan change. And again, as Ms. Hopkins mentioned, the rezoning's another piece of this, and we know that's another discussion we'll have with you all. We shared information about both topics, the comp plan and the rezoning, at our meeting on Monday evening, but would be happy to answer any questions the Planning Commission has about the comp plan amendment this evening.
Mr. Smoos, just to clarify, the open-space designation is going to completely envelop the historical home?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I never did make it to our slide. I started talking, I apologize. So, if you guys can see my arrow right there on the far right-hand image, there's a little black square on the drawings, that's actually the cemetery. That's not the house. The house is just to the page right of the cemetery, so it's about right in this area, right in there. So, yeah, the entire area is surrounded by open space.
Okay. Any further questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, we're going to open up the public hearing for public address. I've got a sign-up sheet that we'll start with. I'll remind everyone that we have three minutes to speak when you approach, if you'll clearly state your name and address. And we have three minutes. I think when you have one minute left, maybe the yellow light comes on. Since we may have several people speak, we're going to try to strictly enforce the time limit. But I have Kelly Barker signed up first. If you'd please come forward.
Hello, good evening. I just want to start by saying that I don't normally come out with a mask. I wanted to let you know that I have-
If you would, give us your name and address.
I'm sorry. My name is Kelly Barker. I live at 1070 Break Road in Elliston, Virginia. I live on adjacent land. I don't normally come out with the mask. I could be sitting at home watching television tonight and eating ice cream. I have terminal cancer, so I really don't need to be here, but I felt the need to come here and express some of my information. We'll try to keep it at three minutes. I would briefly just like to talk about one component of the land, which is the history. And I know you touched on the cemetery just a little bit. Sorry. Father and Gay was established in 1796, of course, by Colonel Hancock. It was in the Revolutionary War. He was actually in there with Count Casimir Pulaski, which was what Pulaski's named after. His daughter Julia actually married Clark from Lewiston Clark. Clark ended up adopting Sacagawea's little boy and his little girl, which is kind of an interesting little tidbit. It is, like he mentioned, Justin, that it is on a national historic registry with the DHR in Virginia. And according to the DHR records, can you move this down? I'm sorry.
Please, please.
There is a property, the property does have a family cemetery, which contains a triangular-shaped tomb, which includes the original owner, who is Colonel Hancock, as I spoke of, and several members of his family. Hancock is rumored to be in the sitting-up position in the tomb because he wanted to watch over his slaves. According to the DHR, and this is a quote, "There has been little study of the property, and they have no record of a systemic archaeological survey in the area." One was done at nearby Madison Farm, which is a little bit down, just slightly, and they did yield some interesting results from that. He further states, "It is certainly possible archaeological resources, including those associated with the enslaved community of Fatherington, Father and Gay, excuse me, still exist on the property." Given the history, as a plantation with 60-plus years of enslaved people, where are those folks? Where is their cemetery? Where are they buried? If you stay involved with current events, you will know that in Pennsylvania County, they have unearthed the unmarked remains of approximately 250 folks, and they're still counting. This is former enslaved people, along with tenant farmers, at the new development at the former Oak Hill Plantation. The DHR has not had any submission on the Father and Gay project, and there is no indication from the county or anyone else that an archaeological survey would be required with this development proposal. I actually currently have a list of approximately 60 names of people that were formerly enslaved there, and I have-
Ms. Barker, your time's up. Thank you very much.
Okay. I would like to present you with a petition with approximately 928 names who are opposed to this, just as I am, without having the archaeological survey done, please.
Okay, thank you.
If you will hand those over there, Shelley can collect that petition from you.
Sorry, I actually didn't see the light.
That's okay. Thank you.
That's okay. Kelly Homer is next on the list. Kimber, I'm sorry, Kimberly Homer, I'm sorry. Kimberly. State your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Kimberly Homer. I live at 222 Price Street and have recently bought land on Echo Hills Road, in which I hope to build a, you know, a little tiny house and something that will still be there in 100 years, because this county is a beautiful place, and we're running out of beautiful places. And after I bought that land, I got involved in the Eastmont Garden, which is fabulous. I hope you all will volunteer there and grow some vegetables. And I also got interested in the Big Spring Mill, and I did not bid on it recently. I heard that it was sold, but I've made a proposal for the Big Spring Mill. This is my little crayon drawing of it. I think we should bring the mill back. I think we should mill masa harina, which you can use for tortillas, because we do have a growing Hispanic population throughout here. I think we should start growing heirloom corn. Why not? We should be, this is an agricultural place. I mean, Blacksburg, I have to say, I've been living here since 1980, and it is unrecognizable. And Elliston is still nice, and it still could be agriculture again. The Future Farmers of America was actually invented at Virginia Tech, right here in Montgomery County. We are losing our agricultural heritage. And in 100 years, we're not going to care about some vinyl-sided townhouse with granite countertop on it, but we're going to wish that we had some food. And I would like you to think about agriculture and what it has meant to the history of this county, and please don't change the Comprehensive Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Dawn Morgan.
I'm Dawn Morgan, and I live at 1351 Echo Hills Road, which overlooks this beautiful valley that you're talking about, putting all these homes up on. She's one of my neighbors.
Hi, I'm Alden Baker Ellery, and I live just down the road at 1260 Echo Hills Road.
Okay.
I had spoken with Steve a little earlier today and shared an email with him, and thought I would just take a minute to read some highlights for those of us that do have that beautiful view. I have lived on Echo Hills Road for the past seven years. I grew up in Blacksburg and lived some of my young adult life there after returning from college, before I ended up in Christiansburg. I lived in Christiansburg for seven more years before moving to Roanoke, as I was working there, and then finally settled in Elliston. My husband and I closed on our house a little less than two weeks before we got married in our backyard, which overlooks Father and Gay. We now have a young son, and although there is much we love about living in this area, we wanted to raise him in a more rural area, where it is easier to connect with and appreciate the natural beauty and history all around us. I fear the proposed development will rob us of some of that experience, and will certainly take away our beautiful view, which will make our home a little less special and a little less desirable should we choose to sell it in the future. I also fear the development will increase our property taxes and bring many more people to this section of the county. Apart from taking away the natural beauty, the immediate area surrounding us has one elementary school, one middle school, and one high school. We have three gas stations, two dollar stores, and two restaurants. We have one doctor's office and one dental office. We have a fire station, but no longer have a local rescue squad. We don't have any grocery stores to speak of, nor many other small businesses in the area. Our infrastructure is not meant to support the number of people that a housing development like this could bring. There will be more traffic, more noise, and the disruption of natural resources, which comes with larger housing developments. Much of the rest of the county is being developed in areas where people are closer to more resources. There are ongoing developments in Christiansburg, around Uptown Christiansburg, and out on Pepper's Ferry Road. There is ongoing development off of Merrimack Road and off of Prices Fork, including Westhill, which is by States and Homes, in Blacksburg, and the largest residential development that downtown Blacksburg has ever seen was recently approved by their town council. I ask you, please, to not sacrifice part of what is so special about this part of our county for the sake of more housing that will increase our property taxes and stress our infrastructure. Please help preserve one of our favorite things about living here, and allow people looking to relocate it to Montgomery County to purchase a home in any of the already numerous developments in more populated areas. Thank you.
I just want to add that we've been up on Echo Hills for 30 years, and I would like for it to stay the way it is. That's why we moved out there.
Thank you. Excuse me. Jay Alden Baker Ellery?
That's me.
That's you? Okay, thank you. Next on the list is Julie Stumpf.
Hi, my name is Julie Stumpf. I live at 3720 Jacob Drive. It's in Shawsville. While my property does not border on this property that we're talking about tonight, I will say I have lived in the Elliston-Shawsville area since 1987, and we've moved there from the Roanoke Valley because of the beauty of the area. And I understand the need for housing. I think a large development like that in that area would not be appropriate for that area for the infrastructure reasons, and it would just destroy the beauty and the quality of life that we have there. Perhaps if we have to have construction there, maybe not so much. Maybe instead of medium-density, maybe smaller density, such a, maybe a smaller impact. And I really do feel for the people who live in Echo Hills and everything, and, you know, in tourism, people come through there in the fall just to see the beauty of the Elliston Straightaway. And with, I fear with all that development coming right up to the highway, it's just really going to change the character of our beautiful community that we call home. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Kitty Rakes. Kitty Rakes.
Hi, I'm Kitty Rakes. I live at 4610 Barnett Road, Elliston, Virginia. I have lived in the Shawsville area for 55 years prior to this. This is my husband, Ron Rakes, and since he's my sidekick, he's next on the list to say something I've forgotten. My husband and I, our friends and our neighbors, are all upset over this large subdivision coming to Elliston. I have a conglomerate of notes here, and I've had to delete a lot of things, so just bear with me. This large subdivision isn't about the Elliston-Shawsville residents or improving our community. We're happy with it, just the way it is. I've heard comments from the builder talk about the rural development. We like rural. Elliston-Shawsville is rural. This subdivision will have an effect on all of us that live in this area. My husband and I bought land about a year and a half ago on a private road, Barnett Road in Elliston, and it joins the Father and Gay property. And there supposedly is a right-of-way for the Father and Gay farm. But why would you let this home builder use our private road for the construction vehicles and tear up our state-maintained road, when they can access Break Road, which is the state-maintained road? They have a lot of road frontage to access off 11 and 460, but that would cost them money, so they want to use our private road as a future connection to the subdivision? And it's been guesstimated that it's going to be 4,462 daily trips in and out of this subdivision. And if any of you can take a shortcut to get to your house, you're going to take a shortcut, and Barnett Road is a shortcut. So, I'm asking you, if this is approved, which I'm praying it isn't, why can you not use the entrance to this historical house? Which I don't understand why they would want it to be a historical house, because to me, being a slave owner is not something to be proud of. Because to me, being a slave owner is not something to be proud of. So I wanted to know, does it matter that we, the people of Ellison-Shawsville community, does it matter what we really think? What we have to look at? Our environment, our wildlife will be changing. We'll have more expenses for a larger sewer and water lines, a larger sewer treatment plant. Our fire department can't handle all these houses. And all these high rises. We looked at property in the Reiner area. We're campers. We wanted to build a pole barn on our property.
Ms. Rakes, if you'd let your husband finish would be great. Your time is up.
All right. Okay, right there. Talk about the pole barn.
Yeah, we had looked at property on Mud Pike Road. I was going to put a building up to put a camper in, and it would have probably been about 18, 19-foot tall. And they were telling us that on that property, we probably couldn't put that building up, because it would block other people's view or, and things of that nature. So what's the difference of me putting a building up and somebody building these townhouses that can be 45-foot above ground-level entrance or whatever? So it just, it just don't seem right for the area we're living in. And I think most of the people in Ellison, if they're surveyed one by one, you'd be hard-pressed to find many people that would want that. Thank you for your time.
Please take into consideration petition. Thank you, ma'am. Zach Milton. And on deck will be Heidi Howery. Okay. Jessica Wilson will be after Mr. Milton.
Hello. My name is Zach Milton. I live at 1600 Moomaw Circle in Ellison, Virginia. I attended and spoke at the last meeting where a proposal for this land was discussed. And at that time, I said that our area was not in need of solar panels, but was in need of housing, and further that this location is the most prime location for that. That is still my stance. Some in our area believe that we get as much say as Reiner, Christiansburg, or Blacksburg. And if not, things just aren't fair. The reality is, we are losing our seat at the table, because we are not growing. District C, which represents our part of the county, has more voters who live within the town of Christiansburg than within Shawsville and Ellison combined. It runs from the Roanoke line all the way to the front of the county courthouse. We are extremely lucky to have a board of supervisor from our area. We have not had a school board member from our area in well over a decade. We are hard-working ourselves into a classic taxation without representation. I graduated from Eastern Montgomery High School 20 years ago this year. My graduating class is the same size as it was right now. It is true that our area has not seen growth, because many of the big landowners have committed their land to conservation easements, which we are very fortunate for. Much of the other land is within a floodplain, a mountain, or too close to the railroad. You likely would not see many landowners who live here to do any further developments, because how the town has turned the current owners of Father and Gay into such pariahs. We've already presented, or prevented one of their proposals for their land. At some point, they are due some rights as property owners, whether we like it or not. Now, do I love the development proposal as is? Absolutely not. I do not like the idea of 45-foot townhomes. I am scared about the sheer volume of homes. I am not impressed that this is basically a cut-and-paste of a Stateson's development in Blacksburg. I am worried about the amount of water runoff and how it will be handled. There's a lot of ditching that needs to be improved in our part of the county. I hope further planning can mitigate a lot of these issues. I'm excited for the idea that we won't hear rumblings of school consolidation. I hope we get young families who want to be involved in our community. And I look forward to an expansion of opportunities for residents. This property is our only one shot for development. And we have to make sure we get it right. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Jessica Wilson and Suzanne Munay will be on deck.
Jessica Wilson, 3792 Old Town Road. I live in one of the old Victorian homes in Shawsville area. I am not totally against development in our area, but I am against the type that they're presenting for us. We do need affordable housing. But what they're proposing is pretty much a city on its own there, and wanting to develop more with that. A lot of us live in that area because we like the way that it is, and it's not dense house living. A real estate broker for over 25 years, and of course, I see all kinds of people, you know, that need housing and affordable. And I don't, you know, I don't think that this type of housing is going to accommodate the people who live there. It will bring in other people that maybe you're not as conscientious. But our infrastructure is a big concern here for everyone, because we just do not have the proper public utilities, public everything, to accommodate this many people and this many houses. I think it needs to consider the actual land and agricultural area instead of just a lot of big townhouses and things of that nature. Thank you.
Suzanne Munay? No comment? Amy Clark?
I think I'm Susan. I'm not sure if I signed up on the right sheet or not. Could I speak?
This is for the public hearing?
Yeah.
Yes, please. Now's your time. And you're, oh.
My name is Susan Creasy Moffett.
Okay.
I grew up in Shawsville. I went to school at Shawsville Elementary, Shawsville Middle School, Shawsville High School.
And where do you live now?
I, I live in Baltimore, Maryland. But I am formerly 3564 George's Run Road, Shawsville, Virginia. And my parents still live there. I grew up in the area, and I felt like a lot of stuff was not offered to us. I think we got overlooked a lot. And anyway, I moved away. I got a bachelor's degree from Radford University. I continued my education. I moved away. And what I've seen, living in Baltimore and the surrounding counties, Hartford County, Baltimore County, once one of these developments goes in, it opens the door for more of them. This is going to set a precedent, I believe, for adding more homes to the community after this, if it does go in. I feel like people in the community have been forgotten, you know, and the only reason that they want to put this development in is because personally, I feel that they're going into a community of like 1,000 people. They want to put in 400 homes. 400 homes would probably have two adults in each home. That's 800 people that are going to then be contributing to the town. And anyway, it would almost overnight take away the voice of the town. I think that's unfair. It also brings unaffordable homes, because most of these homes, what I've been told, is that they range from $300,000 to $400,000 per home. The community of Ellison, they have a 42% poverty rate. The average median income is $33,000. I don't believe these homes are affordable for the community. And I think if they were to put something in the community, it should be affordable to the people that live there already and enhance the community by adding more people. It shouldn't just be recruiting people from outside the community, and that's what it seems like. So I think that's all I have to say. Thank you very much for listening. I sent you all an email on Monday. I believe everyone got the email. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Amy Clark, did we?
No comment.
No comment, okay. And Joshua Williams?
My name is Joshua Williams. I live at 591 Allegheny Spring Road in Shawsville. Let me start with this. I went to church camp at Camp Altamont's in 1990 and was blown away by the beauty of Shawsville, this region, its rural character, its mountains, trees, pastoral farmland. And that's one thing that makes this part of the county unique. Blacksburg's growing, it's got tech. Christiansburg's growing. This is a different part of the county. And this part of the county has had slow organic growth over several centuries to a population of around 2,000 people in the area. And this neighborhood could potentially bring in 1,200 to 1,500 people, almost doubling Eastmont in this region. It's going to bring in a lot of outsiders. And one thing that was brought up at the meeting that the developer brought up on Monday night was affordable housing, the need for affordable housing. But homes that are $285,000 to $385,000 is not affordable housing in Montgomery County. And so the annual mortgage on the cheapest home in this, in this community, assuming a 20% down payment and a 30-year mortgage, is $21,600 a year. The most expensive is $27,815 a year. The annual median income in Ellison is $34,000. No, like, Ellison can't afford these homes. So it's going to be outsiders coming in, bringing in a different demographic than the people who live here. And the raise in property taxes is going to drive the people who live in this region out. It's already begun. Rents have increased in this region, and it's going to happen. And there's a lot of trailer parks. There's a lot, this is an area where people who don't have a lot, they live in this area, and this is going to drive these people out of the county. So if the goal is to bring in wealthy people who are going to displace current residents of the county, then this is going to do that. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. That's the last name on the list. But we would sure welcome additional people? Please, let's see, we got the lady in the back, please. And we'll get you next. Please give us your name and address.
Hi, my name is Paige Williams. I'm Josh's wife, and I wrote it down, because I get nervous. I live at 591 Allegheny Spring Road in Shawsville. My family did not grow up here. We chose to move here because we were drawn to the quiet. We were drawn to the open land, the lack of the traffic, and the values that define this community. We came for the rural lifestyle, and we've rooted ourselves deeply in it. The home that Josh and I live in was built in 1760. It has stood in this valley for over 260 years. We see ourselves as stewards of history and the land and the legacy that surround our home. I'm speaking tonight to strongly oppose the proposed rezoning and development. This project would bring 409 homes to land currently zoned for agricultural use, land that has been in the same family since the 1830s. And that's not just growth, that's transformation. It would increase our population by roughly 50%, almost overnight. You will single-handedly change the culture of our town and our composition, and we don't want it. This development would nearly double our population. It would permanently alter the character of our rural area. Traffic would increase. Public services like schools, fire and rescue, and maintenance would face a strain that they are not built to handle. The developer argues this fits the village expansion model. But our town is not a walkable hub with transit access and dense infrastructure. It is rural and agricultural. The land is currently designated resource stewardship, and the county's own comprehensive plan discourages this kind of development in rural areas. There's no emergency that exists that justifies this shift. This action speaks volumes about your intent to convert farmland into subdivisions piece by piece. And it is not a benevolent action to solve the affordable housing crisis. It is high-volume, profit-driven development placed in a low-density rural area, because the land is cheaper and the zoning rules are easier to bend. And that's not benevolence, that's opportunism. They've said that homes will be affordable, but like my husband just said, they're not going to be affordable to those who live there. You're going to drive out the people of the community and totally change our home. Our family chose to live in a home built before America was even a nation. That decision came with a responsibility, not just to protect the house, but to respect the rural character, open space, and our slower pace of life that have defined our home for centuries. I please, please, I urge you to honor the vision Montgomery County has already set. We ask that you preserve farmland, that you protect our open spaces, and that you respect our history. Thank you.
Thank you. Please come forward and give your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Tracy Burtick. I live at 2357 Gardner Street since 1999. I have grown up in this area myself. But I know I'm going to be saying a lot of the same things that so many of my other neighbors have been saying. Our town has less than 1,000, we have around 1,100 people, not even that many. And the proposed housing is going to double that. There is no way that our infrastructure can handle a doubling of that. Our infrastructure is small. We thought we were big time when we got two dollar stores in the area. Tell me, am I right? So when we say that we're small, we are small. We cannot handle with the infrastructure. Our water system is not up to date. There's no way that you can tell me that my well water will still be safe after you have 400 and some households putting in pesticides, pools, everything going on. There's no way that our wells can handle that. There's no way that our road can handle that. 460, have any of you ever tried to go down 460 when we've had a football game at Tech, or move-in day at Tech, or when the road on 81 is closed? You know that it can take an hour to get from Christiansburg back down to Dixie Caverns. And it's just that short of an amount of time. Putting in another 4,000 people, um, excuse me, drivers daily? We cannot handle that infrastructure. It's not that we don't need housing. We need the infrastructure first. Then we can start putting in the housing. Please, look at the infrastructure first. Look at what our area can handle. Please do not let them come in and just throw all these houses up. And I have definite respect for the builders. I know the builders personally. But we cannot handle that many houses in that small an area. Half of the valley, as many people have said, is flood zone. We cannot handle 400 more houses with anywhere between 800 to 1,600 more people, which is than what we have already in our area. We like it rural. We have no problem with more housing. But we want it to be done respectfully for us. And we want it to be done with an eye for the future of our valley and for the future of the people who are going to be there in a hundred years. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I think we had, yes, sir.
My name's Brandon Carlton. I live at 2280 Miles Road. I agree with everything these people are saying. But I think the biggest problem that people have, and I talked to a lot of people about this. I think the biggest issue that people have is when you bring in these homes that nobody around there can afford, you are immediately pricing out every single resident from that market. There's none of us, most of us in this room, cannot afford a $400,000 house. And the future, you know, our kids have really got a problem. Again, we need housing. Nobody in here would deny that we have a serious housing shortage. I've got four sons. My oldest two still live at home. They have good jobs. One of them works for Avery Trucking. He's a diesel mechanic. He makes good money. And the rent, you know, $1,800, $2,200, $25, we have a real issue between here and Roanoke for young people, for the next generation, to be able to afford a place to live. So, you know, there needs to be some progress made. Whether people want to admit it or not, Ellison and Shawsville are dying little towns. The older folks, the boomers, the folks that have got their retirement and they're spending it, they can afford to stay on the land or to buy more land and, you know, buy these 400 half-million-dollar houses. But my son- 400 half-million-dollar houses, but my sons cannot afford this. And that's probably true for everybody in here. The next generation, they're moving away. They've already moved away. Everybody that has kids around the Shawsville-Ellison area, their kids either have to move to Blacksburg or Radford, or they have to move all the way out to Roanoke, and they can't hardly afford to feed themselves because they're trying to pay rent. So the solution, in my opinion, for this whole thing is that we need to lower the density of the residential stuff on these properties. Instead of making it medium density, let's make it low density. Let's build good starter homes, nice, beautiful, small starter homes, the way that Northeast Roanoke did it back in the 50s. You know, nice, pretty little houses, two bedrooms, God forbid, a basement, put fences around them, give people a nice backyard and a front yard, something that our children can afford to live in. Maybe not forever, but a good starter home where a guy who's got a good job, he can afford to start somewhere and start a family and not, you know, starve to death trying to pay the mortgage on it. So I'm all for selling property the way you want to sell it, but there needs to be some accommodation made for the folks that live around that property. People cannot afford these homes, and you're going to bring in a bunch of outsiders who are probably all going to be Democrats from New York. We see the license plates heading up and down 81. Every other car I see is from New Jersey, New York, and you know they don't vote the same way we do.
Thanks. Would someone else like to come forward, please? Yes, yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Jessica Akers. I live at 505 Weeping Willow Lane in Ellison, Virginia. I just want to say, I had kids very young. I grew up in Christiansburg. I went to Christiansburg School. I ended up having four kids, and I moved to the Shawsville-Ellison area to where they could get a smaller education, you know, education with one-on-one interaction with the kids and the teacher. I just, we like it small down there. We like passing by people and knowing who we, who our neighbor is and waving at them. We feel safe. Adding a bunch of people, I don't think is going to make our area feel safe the way that it is. And I just don't think that we can, you know, our roads can't handle it or any of that stuff. Me and my husband sold our house about two years ago. We're trying to find land and a house to buy, or find land where we can build a house, and we can't do it in that area at 200,000, much less these homes coming for 300,000 and 400,000. The people down there just don't make that much. Plus, we need our farms and our gardens and all that stuff to feed us because any of y'all that went to the store, grocery store, know that food is outrageous nowadays. That's all I have to say.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
If anyone else would like to come forward, please, yes, sir, in the back.
Reno Scott, 8639 Roanoke Road. My parents just moved into the house next door. It's the Barnett Farm, which was originally a land grant from King James. That's how far my family goes back here. This development will literally be my backyard. I choose to live here. I've gone to school here. I worked for Montgomery County. It was my first professional job. I've had job opportunities all over the country. I've traveled the country as a law enforcement instructor. Every person I've talked to, when I tell them I'm from Ellison, talks about how beautiful it is. This will destroy that. There's a lot of us that choose to be here, and sooner or later, those of us that contribute, our public servants, like myself, my wife, my parents, we won't be here anymore. And you will get people that don't care about this place, and it will just become another urban sprawl. I hope you guys will find it in your hearts to think about what this community was built on. I wish I was a farmer like Mr. Hawes. I don't have that skill set. We need more farms. We need more honest, hard-working people. We don't need another cash grab. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else would like to come forward? Anyone else would like to come forward and speak? We'd love to hear you. Okay, seeing none, we will close the public address portion of the public hearing and open it up to the commissioners for discussion, comment, action.
I'll say, I'll say one confusion that I've kind of picked up on from different people is the property is right now in resource stewardship. Some people confuse that with conservation, that thinking that the land would not be developed. But prime vacant land with access to water and sewer and a road network is a resource that needs to be utilized for the benefit of the community. So it's not, it's not just land that's supposed to be set aside for, to remain vacant. And then we hear a lot about housing affordability, and restricting the supply of homes doesn't fix that, doesn't help that. It actually makes it worse. Restricting the supply just makes rents and housing costs go up.
Mr. Chair, just a couple comments. I appreciate and empathize with a lot of the concerns that have been expressed. I do believe that many of those issues, and I'm sure some of us up here share some of those same concerns, but those are really more issues that need to be discussed at the rezoning aspect of these two applications. And at this point, we are evaluating the application for the comp plan, land use designation. I do feel that we're not approving a bunch of houses that may or may not be built. We're certainly setting the stage for that. I want to be transparent about that. But we do have an opportunity to get into the details of the proposed development and its impact on infrastructure and some of the other issues during the rezoning. With respect to the comp plan amendment, I do believe that staff has done a good job of articulating that this application does follow the process, and it does meet the requirements that are set forth by the county for entertaining adjustments to the land use plan in the comp plan. So with that said, I would offer a motion to approve the application as presented by staff.
Have a motion for approval?
Second.
Have a motion for approval and second. Any further discussion?
I just want to second what was said. I live in Prices Fork. I am a Price from Prices Fork. I am well familiar with West Hill and states and homes and the development. I understand your concerns. We voiced similar concerns. I do understand and can recognize infrastructure is a real concern. I also understand, we listened to something probably a year ago when they came and talked with us about affordable housing and how public servants and teachers throughout the area cannot afford a home. So I understand that, too. I understand the need for growth, and I do think Ellison and Shawsville will have more voice with some growth. I also do agree that the group, Justin and his team, have done a great job. This is just one piece, as we started out this evening. This is just the comprehensive plan. This is not the number of homes that will be built. That is a second and later on discussion. So I, too, understand and would say they have followed what the comprehensive plan and what this request is for. So I, too, feel your pain, but this is the first step, and you will continue to have voice in the second step as well, and I hope you will continue to use that. But I would second the motion that we would take a vote for the comprehensive plan.
The public hearing is closed. I'm sorry, sir. I'm sorry. You'll be able to maybe go to the board supervisor's public hearing.
When you put these things in.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Any further comments, Mr. Miller?
Never had a loss for words. I returned to Montgomery County after about a 40-year absence, and I worked in the Shawsville-Ellison area. Some of the kindest and gentlest people I've known were in that community, and/or in that community. I moved from there to a community where, more specifically where I grew up, in Lower Ryner, Virginia, and very similar community, good, old-fashioned values, hard-working people, people who said, yes, sir, and no, ma'am, and took their hat off at the table, and all of those, those good values that I believe that we can preserve, but we must work to do so. The problem that I see is that Ellison and Shawsville are suffering from a lack of housing, which means a lack of population. Schools are woefully underoccupied. A high school built for 500-plus students with perhaps, I don't know, 250 students now. In Ryner, we saw growth. We saw several communities that initially we didn't like, but we also saw people that became a part of the community, that integrated into the community, due in part from their efforts as well as those of people who'd been there for 10 years or 100 years or 200 years. And I don't think there's an easy answer either way here, but I do believe that there must be some growth in that community, and I'm not sure where it can take place. Thank you.
Can we bring up the slide that Justin had that showed the four qualifying reasons for a change to the comprehensive plan? I believe you said that this meets two of the criteria. Is that correct?
So in our analysis, it was determined the conditions have changed bullet as well as supportive of other comprehensive plan goals.
So is that, am I incorrect in saying it meets all the criteria to change?
So staff believes that there was justification for two of the four.
Two of the four.
But the policy has written one or more criteria must be met to be considered.
So the remaining ones that it doesn't meet weren't really a factor in here? Okay. I just wanted to share that because sometimes when you look at the bigger picture of all those criteria, they had to have been in there for a reason, and this proposed change to the comprehensive plan does not meet all of those, but it does meet the minimum requirement. So keep that in mind when you're thinking about making this change because it will open the door for bigger changes down the road.
Mr. Foster, do you have a question or comment?
We can't hear. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Don't have the strength to push that button tonight. Most of the comments tonight related to the beauty of the area and the concern about outsiders coming in. The issue, and I can relate because once upon a time, and it doesn't seem that long ago, but I had a house on Echo Hills, so I know about the beauty of looking across that valley. But the issue before us, as Mr. Crowell pointed out and Ms. Sharp-Robinson, is the comp plan and what we must consider in terms of the request before us. It's not the proposed or penciled in or visionary plan for a development. It is the narrow question of the comp plan. So that's kind of where I am on this topic.
Mr. Foster, if I could just add, too, I do think that it's important to note that a very significant portion of the 600 acres is being designated as open space, and that 300-plus acres around the historic building does preserve, not entirely, but it certainly does create a buffer and does provide continued agricultural opportunities and view shed protection and preserves the historic significance around the building. So I do think that since that aspect of this was addressed in the application, it does fit very well in addressing many of the comments.
And I'm encouraged, looking forward to the rezoning. We've seen some maps of the house and lot configurations, and it appears to me that from the straightaway, you're not going to be able to see much of the development because it's behind the tree line. And then also, and then also, also, the view shed up above is not, that's where they have some estate-sized lots. And so, yeah, so I'm encouraged by that. But we've also run into this several other localities throughout, areas throughout the county where, where when the comp plan was instituted in 2004, areas that did not have access to water and sewer were put in resource stewardship. And then as those, water and sewer was extended into those areas, then when we had the comp change amendments come to us, I think we've approved just about every one of them. I can't think of one that we turned down that, you know, that had water and sewer and road network. So we've run into this many times before, so. Any further discussion? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. And Mr. Linkus, you'll call the roll.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Sharp-Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Simkins?
No.
Secretary Linkus is no. Vice Chair Foster?
Yes.
Chair Rice?
Yes.
And so when did this, before the board supervisor?
So this will go to the board of supervisors on April 14th at 7:15 PM. It will be another public hearing held here in this room.
Okay, thank you.
Take a 10-minute break, but be sure to tell them they can also speak German with their English, because that's where that man's sleeping.
Okay. So we're going to take a 10-minute break and come back at quarter till. Thank you. Thank you. We're going to bring the meeting back to order. Next on our agenda is the actual public address for anyone to approach the commission about anything they'd like to talk about that does not pertain to the previous public address, public hearing. Seeing none, we will, well, I actually have a sign-up sheet, but I think people may have mistaken. If anyone would like to speak, come forward. If not, we will close the public address portion of our meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
And we move into work session.
The move, we go into work session?
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second to go into work session, and we're going to be discussing the request by Father and Gay LLC to rezone from May 1 to PUD-RES, planned unit development. And, um, let's see, Steve, um, let's see.
I will, I will, I will start us off.
I got you. I got you. I'm sorry. I couldn't find the...
And just for clarification, for anybody that's watching us via the live stream, there will be no action taken this evening during work session. We are simply presenting this case to the commission and getting guidance as staff as we move forward with our analysis of the application. But to orient you, we're talking about the exact same property that we were speaking about earlier with the comprehensive plan amendment, again, in the eastern portion of the county, known as the Father and Gay LLC property. So the proposal that you have in front of you, you can see here on the map, is a rezoning request. The total parcel acreage is 659.66 acres. The request is to rezone approximately 276.66 acres. This would align with the area that you saw in the comprehensive plan request that was designated as medium-density residential. The proposed concept plan is there on the right. You can see, those of you that were on the site visit with us today, here is the farm entrance. Hold on, let me get my mouse working here. This is the farm entrance that we entered at today. If you'll remember, the special use permit request for the solar farm that we received in 2022, that acreage is roughly to the right of the stormwater management area that's identified here on the concept plan, as well as some additional acreage. Eastern Montgomery Elementary School there is in the center of the page, and then Eastern Montgomery High School is, is to the left there. You can see that in the concept plan, the division between single-family residential lots, and then the greatest density there for the townhouses, and the majority of the townhouses and villas are located to the rear of Eastern Montgomery Elementary. There are some interparcel connections there that you can notice for future road connection, and then the cul-de-sacs. And then on the north of the page, you can see those large estate lots that were discussed today, that sort of go up the ridgeline there, have some home sites identified. But the idea there is that the, the majority of the forestation that's located on the property would remain in those estate lots. We also, as opposed to just including the concept plan without the aerial, we were provided this by the developer, but we think this also helps for you to see the existing tree cover that's on the property, and the intention to retain as much of that existing vegetation as possible. Mr. Simonas told us when we were on-site today that I've actually been doing an inventory on some of those larger heritage trees in an effort to make sure that those are preserved throughout the process. I'll also point out the stormwater management areas that have been included on the concept plan. We'll get more into this as we do our full analysis, but as a general rule of thumb, with stormwater, we want to keep all stormwater that is generated on the property on the property to prevent that runoff from, runoff to adjacent properties. There are some walking connections that are included on the concept plan here to both the elementary and the high schools, as well as a recreational trail network that exists to access that upper pond and some of those more wooded areas. Wanted to also show you the, the breakdown. Again, the, the larger rezoning request is for 276.66 acres. However, you can see there is a large amount of the property that is put in open space within the development. This gets down to that level of the zoning ordinance requirements and the subdivision ordinance requirements for open space. The blue areas there are non-recreational open space that have been identified throughout the development. So there are a series of, again, those walking trails, the stormwater management areas. There's also some small pocket parks that are created throughout the development as well with the, the active recreational open space. So again, as I discussed with you on the site visit, while there is a request to rezone the planned unit development residential, the way our ordinance is structured, they will also be subject to the base districts that underlie that planned unit development residential zoning. So for the large estate lots, that base district would be an R1, an R3 for the single-family detached, and then an RM1 for the single-family attached units. The proposal would be for 400, up to 409 residential units. That would be a mixture of single-family detached, single-family detached estate lots, townhomes and villas. And then, as was referenced by several of the speakers this evening, there is also a request for a special use permit to allow increased height. So in the residential 3, the permitted height in the zoning ordinance is 35 feet. They have requested a 40-foot maximum height in R3. And then in RM1 multifamily, the permitted height is 35 feet, and the requested height is, I believe that's supposed to say 45 feet, so I apologize for that error.
Would the developer be able to show us some pictures of these townhouses so we got a visual what they look like from front elevation?
They're included in the application. We have some pictures from the back of the application.
Okay, thank you.
So, and as I noted on the site visit as well, within the zoning ordinance, there are some provisions that allow exceeding the maximum height in the zoning district when you take into account buffer yards, setback requirements. But when you go to the PUD-RES district, it requires the special use permit for that increased height. So there is flexibility within the base districts. So I just wanted to point that in, in there, that there is developer, developer flexibility within the code, but you're seeing the special use permit request just because of the PUD-RES zoning request. So staff is currently evaluating the application. We're looking at public water and sewer, transportation impacts, public school capacity, stormwater and erosion and sediment control measures, and then historic impacts due to the nature of the Father and Gay Estate. I wanted to bring forward if there was any thing else that you wanted staff to include in its analysis of the application. We'll be providing you with a very robust staff analysis when we release the packet. But if there are other items that you would like for us to consider in our evaluation, I'll, I'll take those comments. So as part of the review process, that, the application package is sent to our fire and EMS department to evaluate it, and we would get written comments back from them about the application that we'll include in the packet for you.
And can I also ask, she talked about...
So I'll go back to the concept drawing for you and point that out. So Barnett Road here, I'll use my mouse. Barnett Road is here. That is, has a right-of-way to serve the Father and Gay property. The proposal that we have is that would be an emergency access connection only. That, in conversations with adjacent landowners, turning that into a full road connection is not going to happen. So it would be utilized for emergency services. When we were on-site, Mr. Simonas noted that that would probably have a bollard put, put in place and would be removed if emergency services needed to enter the site. But that would not have any commercial traffic, or, excuse me, residential traffic. would not have any commercial traffic, or excuse me, residential traffic in and out of the site on a regular basis. That I will defer to Steve on what their plans are, if, if approved, what the construction route would be.
Steve, would you like to come forward? Maybe we have a question or two for you.
Yeah, we, we tried, Ms. Sharp Robinson, to explain this the other night. So Barnett Road's a 30-foot private right of way. Father and Gay, the family, the property does have legal access to that because it leads into the property. And, and I think there was some confusion in the application and on the drawing because we do show it as a future road connection. In essence, that road could be, in the future, developed as a public road, but it would need to be dedicated. So we would need to have additional 10 feet of right of way dedicated from our property owner neighbors, from our property down to 460 in order for that to happen. And we, we don't see that happening. So what we've proposed is that we would bollard off that road and it would be, you know, for access, for emergency access only. This, the project will be phased. There are currently two rental homes that the Father and Gay family own that, that accessed through there as well. So they would still be able to access that in early phases because we wouldn't start construction on that end of the property. We intend to start on the road A side, which is where the farm road is. So, and if people have a concern, I'm sorry, I'm getting to your, getting to the answer, but we can, we can look into, and I don't think our developers would have any issue, you know, proffering that we wouldn't use that road for construction traffic. We'll have other access through the property itself.
I say that again, not.
You're muted, Andrea.
Sorry. Not Stateson Development, but the other one across the street on Price's Fork. There seems to be a lot of concern that construction is using a back access to Brooksfield.
Yep.
And that's been a real problem. And I just, I don't want that for those people that live there already.
Yep, agreed.
Thank you.
Mr. Simonis.
Yes, sir.
Does the packet, you mentioned, well, somebody mentioned, the heritage trees. Is there any information that we're going to get about other plantings to create more of a visual barrier?
So as.
Back 400 feet from the road.
Right.
But it's still a little straggly in the land behind it.
It is, and what we, what we hope to do.
Active pasture, I might add.
Right. What, what we hope to do is get some photos from some different vantage points. I was actually down there Sunday taking a few, you know, looking from the high school property back into the site. And again, there, in the summertime, you're going to see very, very little. You know, there's so much vegetation along 460, you know, along the school property, you know, heavy evergreen buffers, and then back behind our neighbors on Barnett. But you go out there right now, the leaves are off the trees in those fence lines. So as I believe Justin had mentioned, or maybe it was Bree, I'm sorry, I can't remember, but, you know, we'll have to have buffers in place based on that agricultural zoning adjacent to us. As far as the specimen trees that we're going to try to save, like I mentioned on site, we've GPSed them. It's going to depend on the grading, but we've tried to lay the lots in there where maybe it can sit in somebody's backyard as long as the tree's healthy enough to save.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Smose, can you tell us again the timeline? It seemed like we're at the very beginning of a long project, that two years before you have a house to sell and how long?
I would guess so, Mr. Rice, best case. We've got to get through this, so that's another couple of months. As, as you're aware, it'll take us, you know, it'll take us several months to get the, the full set of construction plans together. It's goes, goes through the county process. So from start to finish, normally when we start a rezoning, if we can get through that in a year, you know, we're, we're pretty happy. And then we've got to get, you know, we've got to get site bids, we've got to get people out there moving dirt. So it's going to be a large project and.
Two years to start moving dirt and eight years before you're finished?
Yeah, I don't think two years to start moving dirt, but I think, you know, sometime middle of, what is it, we're in March now, right?
Yeah.
You know, maybe towards the end of next summer, you know, we might be able to be out there pushing dirt. But as far as actually having a house ready, it would probably be, that two years is probably a, a good estimation.
So some of the people tonight were acting like we're going to change overnight, but it's not going to be overnight. It's going to take multiple years to build out.
Right. And, and similar to West Hill, we had planned a five to eight-year build out in that. I believe we're in year three right now, so we're probably going to land in that five, five and a half year range on West Hill. And that's going to be similar to this in the five, that five to eight year range. We would, we hope not, but we would anticipate absorption down there might be a little bit slower than the Blacksburg market.
Yeah.
But if we're in that five to six, eight year range is kind of what we're, kind of what we're thinking. And Stateson likes to try to build, you know, in each of their phase, have a couple, have all their different product types. So they're, you know, multiple product types of the single family and their villas and their townhomes. It's going to be a little bit harder in this because as, as Justin mentioned, we've got our, the, the biggest density is kind of back behind the school, so it's going to take us a little bit to get there. But we do have some villas on the first section as we, where we parked today at the site visit, just past the tree line. So we would have a couple of villas down there, but, but most of that density is back behind the school. And I did, if you don't mind, Mr. Rice, I wanted to, Ms. Simpkins asked a question out there as far as kind of our developable acreage beyond just the estate lot. So I did just a little bit of calculating in between our meetings. That's somewhere between 155 and 160 acres. So when you do that math on 407, it's about 2.5 units per acre. And we've got the maximum density in our, in our application is, is right at two per acre, because if you're looking at the whole thing. So it's still not a huge, it's not a huge bump up in density. It's a half you, or, yeah, half a unit per acre.
That doesn't take out the green or recreation space.
No, because that's part of what we have to do in a PUD rez. You know, we have to take, if we've got 100 acres, 20 acres of that's got to be open space. It's 20% right, or 25%.
I think it's 20, but.
20, yeah. So, but, but when we look at that, when we look at density, that's how we, we do look at it from the overall development and then knowing, you know, you could look at 100 acres and say in an R, you know, in a higher density residential, maybe you're getting four units per acre. But realistically, you're not getting that because you have to take out the, the area for roads and stormwater and open space.
Is that similar to compare to what you've done in Blacksburg?
The density at West Hill, we had more lots on less acreage, so it was a higher density at West Hill than we have here.
Okay.
Steve, you mentioned the issue of buffers and the seasonal nature. Part of that, I assume, can be, at least in part, solved by using conifers rather than deciduous plants.
Correct, correct.
And Steve sort of alluded to this, but if the development was approved, when they go into site plan review, the, the zoning districts that abut it would determine what type of buffer is placed along that property line. And the zoning ordinance specifies a mixture of evergreen and deciduous trees, understory trees, bushes, smaller plantings as well. And that's done by the linear foot. So again, that would be something that the specifics of which we would work out at site plan review if approved.
And staff in the past has, has worked with us to determine if that prescriptive buffer language is not the most appropriate, let's find a way to make it appropriate so maybe we don't need to plant more deciduous trees, maybe we need to plant some more evergreens in, in, in response to buffer requirements and concerns. And we're, we're fine with that.
Thank you for providing that, answering my question on that.
You're welcome.
But I do have another point and see if you could speak to it. Someone, early on, I think maybe the first speaker, asked about a study with the Department of Historical Resources and said nothing's been done and that there's potentially things that need to be looked for. Is, have you, can you speak to that?
So I'm not sure if that was the same citizen that brought that up at our meeting Monday night, but somebody did bring that question up. And the way we addressed it is anytime we are working within a, I'm going to get to your answer, but it's, I got to kind of go around to get to it. So when we're working in a live stream or wetlands, a lot of times if we're having to permit wetlands or streams, part of that permit regulation requires us to go through and get historical, you know, data, archaeological data. Do we have any invasive species or protected species on, on the property itself? So we don't know yet if we're going to get in, into any of that. We have had a geotechnical report done on the property, that we've had somebody out there doing that. We haven't had an actual historian or archaeological study done on the property at this time. We may, we may be required to do it.
I was going to ask, who would make that decision?
I'll add some context there. This will be part of staff's analysis under the historic impacts. So the only time that an archaeological survey is mandated through the National Historic Preservation Act is when federal dollars are being used in a project. So there's no provision in county or state code to mandate an archaeological assessment for residential development. However, section 10, 10.12305 of the Code of Virginia has a policy laid out that if human remains were to be discovered, all work has to stop immediately on site and the sheriff's office has to be contacted. At that point, the sheriff then contacts the Department of Historic Resources that provides guidance going forward. What generally happens in those situations is the, the DHR would be working with the developer to preserve those remains on site, and then at that point, a further analysis would be conducted. Or the developer and the county would work to relocate those remains to a new location. However, the county does not determine what that policy is. That's the Department of Historic Resources. So I just wanted to give you that context.
There's a procedure in place? If you dig up, you're, you're scraping dirt, open up a grave, could be 100-year-old grave, 200-year-old, but there's a procedure in place that you, that they have to be followed?
There is, and, and we've had that, we haven't, we've been lucky enough not to have that happen down here. We have some, have had some of our other offices in the state on projects up in the Richmond area, you know, run into, run into that before. So yeah, there is a process in place. And it's, it's very time consuming. So it's on the, it's on the developers, it's to their benefit to do a little bit of due diligence on the front side, which I'm sure we'll do.
So she provided a 900 signatures on a petition? She turned that in? And there's 1,000 residents there, so I don't know. I'm sure some of them are kids, but maybe, is, is there a way to get a, to see if that was like 90% of the population down there signing that or?
We, we will forward that petition on with the rezoning application as well, so you'll have access to it. I'm not sure how they collected the, the petition. I do not know if it has locations listed on it or not. I, I would assume it probably has some signatures on it that were not from that area necessarily, maybe people who have moved to other areas. And that's, that's just based on some of the things I have seen. But hopefully that petition has locations on it and we can, we can get you some determination on who's in the area.
Okay, thank you.
Steve, and a couple of other similar historic areas in the county. I'm thinking specifically of both Smithfield and the river bottom down.
White Thorne.
At White Thorne, yeah. Ground penetrating radar has been used because there are obviously moral and political issues that can get stirred up very quickly. Is that prohibitively expensive in a case like this?
I'd have to, I, I would lean on Travis. I know we've done that on other projects and probably not at this big of a scale, but normally we'll do that if we're looking for rock. You know, if we know we've got bad soil or rock or, or, you know, potential caves, you know, they can show some of those voids. I'm not aware of us ever doing it for that particular purpose that we're, we're talking about, but what I, what I would, what I would suggest to, to our Stateson team would be, let's do a little bit of historical digging on our end. You know, we, we can dig through some of the old records and research, just like the, the lady that spoke today who had generated that name of, of, of people who had worked there on the, on the farm in the past. So we can do some digging, because a lot of those old maps that you'll find, you know, that they'll have, they'll have historic cemeteries shown on them. And a lot of times they don't make them to, to GIS. GIS does a really good job finding them, but sometimes they don't. But we can do a little bit of digging on that. We'll, we'll try to have some updated information for you all in a couple of weeks.
Well, we all know where Colonel Hancock is sitting. None of us know where the, the enslaved people who were there.
Right.
Are.
I will say, Mr. Miller, for, oh, sorry, Mr. Crowell, I was just going to, to Mr. Miller's point, in my, in my past work as a historic preservation consultant, we did ground penetrating radar in much smaller areas, historic cemeteries. You're, you're talking tens of thousands of dollars for that process. So I believe, to, to go back to the reason that state code is written in the way that it is, if there is a determination that remains are found, it sort of narrows that area to allow that process to continue without an exorbitant expense to the developer or the state in that instance.
Mr. Crowell.
So I guess I'm a little confused about the area that we're talking about. There seems to be a difference, I lost 26 acres somewhere, between what's being shown on the special use permit and rezoning.
Or the comprehensive plan.
Yes. Can you?
I, I can.
Clarify that.
Yep. So, I'm sorry, Justin. So on the comprehensive plan amendment, where you'll see the line, and there's a reason, there's a reason as we talked to staff, we did this, the line for the comprehensive plan for the medium density residential kind of comes up, this line jogs a little bit, and then it follows the property line up here. So there's a chunk of property that's outside of this red line that's our developable area. The reason we did that, as we talked with staff, we've got these future road connections, which VDOT requires us to have for a subdivision of this size that we've got ways to tie out in the future. The idea was, okay, these could be future developable areas, so let's go ahead and get them in the residential, in the medium residential comp plan right now, but they're not being rezoned. So if that ever needed to come, if, if that was ever a future, future phase, you know, the developer at the time would have to come back and go through a rezoning for those pieces. But that's the difference.
Those parcels are owned by Father and Gay now?
They are.
Okay.
Yeah.
And just in general, have you guys got a, an idea of how much grading? Is there a significant amount of earthwork and stream crossings? And you mentioned the JPA and triggering the, the studies for that.
Right, yeah. So earthwork, after we get up this first hill right here, it's, it's, it lays really, really nice. So I mean, that's, that's one of the biggest reasons we've got the project laid out as it, as it is, is because we're trying to minimize grade work for the roads. And, and that's one thing Stateson really pushes on us, to be sure the grading's right and we're getting it balanced and we don't have a lot of excess or unfor. From a stream crossing, there are a couple of, couple of existing farm crossing, you know, farm road crossings. The hope would be we could utilize and, and just expand on the one that's there right here in the middle of the property as we cross the creek. That is a live stream. There's a pond up here at the top of the property and then a smaller farm pond that it drains into. But that is, that is a live stream. So I don't think we're going to trip into any, any JPAs. We, we'll have to permit, you know, we'll have to obviously permit that section of disturbances, you know?
Right.
Because right now it's maybe 12 feet, you know, so we're going to have to, you know, widen that and stick a new culvert in. Our stormwater facilities down here, we're planning to keep off the bank. It's, it's a fairly small in size bank, so it's, it's not a real big wide creek in that
Also, it seemed like your application was really vague about the active recreational area, both in terms of if and when and what.
Mm-hmm.
And I didn't know if, that, that may come up as you're going through the process, and I don't know if that was purposely left open like that.
It, it was purposely. We, we would like to do, and I'm hoping I'm not speaking out of turn, Travis, what we would like to do is something similar at West Hill with a clubhouse and pool, which we called out in the application as optional. What we, what we were trying to figure out is when is the appropriate time to put that in? You know, there's a lot of expense with those upfront. The way West Hill was done, that was a, that was kind of your main view as you come into West Hill, so that was important from the development standpoint, sales standpoint, to get that done early in a project. This one, for lack of a better word, is kind of buried back into the center of the site. So part of it's just going to be the, the financial impact of, of that, Mr. Crowell. You know, can, can the project at the pricing that Stateson's looking at, you know, this is, you know, the pricing we provided to the community on Monday night was starting at that 286 range. You know, so that's, that's, that's quite a bit less than what we're selling out at West Hill. So, you know, trying to, trying to make those numbers work for a clubhouse and a pool is going to be a little bit harder out here. So that's what we want to do, but we didn't want to necessarily commit to it and have to come back later and try to pull that out. But we will have plenty of walking trails. All the green spaces here that you see, Stateson does, these little pocket courtyards, you know, all of our townhomes, and we'll get into more of the detail, I know, in a couple of weeks, but, you know, our townhomes are alley loaded, so we don't have front yards with, with driveways in them. They're, they're loaded from the back and they, and they focus on these little interior common areas. So, you know, you've got groups that have interior green space. and they focus on these little interior common areas. So, you know, you've got groups that have interior green space. You know, and other little pocket park areas that we have showed in there. But our main active recreational area will be right here. And there will be some structure there. It won't just be an open field with a, you know, gazebo sitting on it. It, it will be something with some, with some substance to it.
So is it your intention, like right now, you've kind of got this gross four hundred and nine units broken down by the four groupings, but not, not tying down the number of each of those units? Is that the intent to have that flexibility and essentially be market driven by what?
No, I, I mean, actually, the way the, again, I'm hoping I'm not speaking out of turn, Travis, but the way contractually states and is, is contracted with the family, you know, part of, part of that contract is the type of lots that they will be building. So, you know, we're set at four oh nine. We're not going to go to four ten or four twelve. We're, we're set at four oh nine as a maximum with the family. And, you know, a, a single family lot demands a different price than a townhouse lot. So all that's part of that negotiated contract between the family and states. Now, what we could do is, you know, what we didn't, what we didn't specify exactly was every single, single family lot size. So it may be we've got a smaller lot size on one, you know, shown on our master plan here, and we flip that around with a bigger one. So we've got some flexibility in how the single family lots layout and the townhomes. You know, those could grow a little bit here or there, but the number of villas, the number of townhomes, the number of single family detached on our regular sized lots and then the, the estate lots. I mean, those numbers are pretty set.
Okay, but I, I didn't see that anywhere in the application, though. That might be something you want to follow up on. Because I think there, there is a, a lot of concern that was voiced about, you know, people seem to want, um, single family estate lots. And if, if we can put that in perspective, I think it'll help. If it's completely up in the air, that, that too, I think will, will be important. But if we, if you all, as far as the planning process goes, are pretty set that the number of estate lots that, that you're counting on, it'd be nice to have that kind of tabulated along with the, the villas. And, and I'm not sure when you, if that ties your hands too much to react to the market on what's selling and, and how the subdivisions actually laid out.
At the site visit, it was mentioned that the, we're talking about home values. It said that the estate lots may, may go for a million. So that might affect.
Okay, well, why don't you just do all of them?
We did find, you know, in West Hill, we, we got very specific on lot sizes and townhome sizes, and that, that was pre-COVID. And, and we have seen out there, it's, it's been a struggle because we did tie ourselves down so tight on that one. So in talking with staff, we have found some ways to, to still, what we hope give planning commission, the board of supervisors, the, the guarantee that we'll do the project the way we're proposing, but not lock us down to it exactly. This is, this is the exact square footage of a lot we have to have, or this is the exact width of what the townhouse will be. So that, that was more important to us in the flexibility, with a little bit of flexibility than really, we're going to flip this type of house with this type of townhouse.
Steve, I have a question about Eastern Montgomery Lane. I certainly endorse the use of that for multi-purpose, but in my work experience, I've had lots of vehicles of different colors that have clashed with national school bus yella. And I just wonder where we are on our thoughts for how that works.
Right. So we, when we met with VDOT, we've met with VDOT a couple of times on this. They're going back and looking through all their records on Eastern Montgomery Lane. You know, the land, that right of way was actually dedicated. You know, so there was some, there was some question upfront of whether that had actually been dedicated yet, or, you know, whether it was acting as a private road. But they did confirm it has been dedicated. Our hope would be, Mr. Miller, that, you know, as we talked about on site, you know, as, as people are coming, I'm trying to remember the exact directional, the proportion of directions with the travel way that we looked at for four sixty when we were determining the turn lane requirements for our road A. But let's just say hypothetically, more people are coming from Christiansburg there in the afternoons. In, in the morning, in, in the afternoons, you're not going to see that as much of that conflict because that peak hour, those peak hours we look at in the afternoons are from four to six in the, in the evening. And, you know, the elementary schools have already let out by then. The morning is where you would have a, a better chance of that conflict. What we think is good is that we're not going to be impacting the intersection with people coming in, but people will be coming down our new road and tying in right there. Now, we haven't sat down, well, I'll say Alex here with, with states and has had several conversations with the principal at, at Eastern Montgomery. As far as us getting the, the cafeteria the other night, and she's, uh, she's very interested in the project. So we'll probably have more discussion with her. And we, we had to do that at West Hill with Prices Fork Elementary too, because we showed that connection. But as we started getting into more discussion with the school system or with the schools out there, you know, there was concern, okay, are we taking kids directly across a bus loop? You know, do we have to have a, you know, another teacher sitting out there, you know, like at a, at a, at a drop off area? So we need to do some work with both the high school and the elementary school to be sure. If we're directing kids and their parents, whether they're walking, biking, or driving into the school, it's in the, it's in the most appropriate place we can, we can get them.
Thank you.
I have a question about the height for the S U P for the R three and R M one. When you're talking about forty feet high, is that four stories? But are, is that for the townhomes? It'll be three stories?
Yeah, the townhomes and in, in the back, in the back of your rezoning package, I don't know if they've gotten all that. Okay, so in our full package, uh, some, again, similar to West Hill, we included examples of the single family homes, the villas, the townhomes. So the townhomes that have been built out at West Hill, I would, I would encourage you, Ms. Simpkins, to take a look at those. But we've got pictures of those. So they are a three story townhouse.
Three?
Three story, yes, ma'am. So the way the county measures height, it's from the, basically the base elevation just outside the front door. You know, along the ground, we usually figure about eight inches below, you know, our finished floor elevation. And then it goes up to an average, kind of the midpoint of the roof. It doesn't go all the way up to the top. So as we, as I mentioned out on site, we've looked at it, and I think before we come back to you, you're going to see a couple of changes in that special use permit. We'll probably be able to pull the R three, which is up to forty feet. We may pull that completely and just withdraw that request. And the forty five foot for the townhome, we may be able to shrink that or pull that. There's only one townhouse type that states and builds that kind of gets us over, you know, into that upper threshold. So we're going to have, we've just been chatting tonight, you know, we're, we're going to have some conversations internally to see if we, we may realistically build that unit out there. And if not, we could, we could pull that S U P as well. But I think no matter what, we can probably take that height down from forty five feet to forty one, forty two.
So it's a single, single unit that's three stories?
Yes, ma'am.
Not one floor and then another floor and then another floor. And it's like this unit up here is three sold and this unit here is?
No, no, it's not an apartment. It's just, it's a, it's a standalone, three story row house, townhouse.
And that seemed to concern the people, the height of that, that, that you were talking about might be buffered with the front not being built out by the road, but inside, and that seemed to not go over too well with that.
Yeah, and it's, and it's strange, you know, we, we had been hearing through the grapevine that that was a big concern, and we heard it a couple of times tonight. Not one person brought it up Monday evening. It was, it was really, really odd with everything we talked about. Nobody brought up the height. But I, I think we can address a lot of that and we'll, I said, well, like I said, we'll, we'll update everybody in the next week or two.
And staff will make sure in, both within the analysis and in the presentation that we provide at the meeting, we'll give you more information about how the county actually calculates height. Because I don't think it's necessarily as intuitive to, to everyone that's not working with zoning ordinance every day. So we'll do that in our analysis and also provide some visuals on how that's calculated. So that might answer some of those questions.
And if you remove the town, townhomes from there and just, and villas and just had single family detached homes, how much would that reduce your four oh nine number?
It would reduce it a lot. We wouldn't do the project. We, we wouldn't do the project.
How much would it reduce half?
We, we didn't even look at it that way with just single family because we, we can't hit, we can't hit all the various price points. You hit a much higher price point. So the concern everybody had about affordability, if we take the townhomes and the villas out, you just jacked everything up to a three eighty six plus from a cost standpoint. And that's, that's what I hope, you know, we tried to explain the other night is that, you know, density is not just slamming as much in there as we can as, as anybody that's in the development world right now or has tried to buy a house or build a house or, gosh, pave a driveway. Everything is expensive now. So, you know, if we take the same road layout and we take all of our townhomes out and, you know, we're, 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 we've got the same costs, the exact same cost of infrastructure, and that's divided over, you know, fewer lots. So that, that infrastructure cost gets, gets spread out over less lots, and that just kicks our, kicks our unit prices up. So it's, it's density that allows us to get closer to it. And affordable, but attainable, attainable housing is what probably the way we should.
But I guess it would also impact the price because a single family standalone house is going to be six hundred and the townhouse is going to be three eighty or two eighty five or something. So, so more people could afford the townhouse than can afford the single family house.
So that was my question. Actually, Mr. Foster and I were talking about it at the break. How much is it a square foot to build a home or anything at this, like on an average? What is the cost?
There's no average. I mean, if we threw out a number to you, we'd just be picking it out of the air. There's not, it all depends on finishes, lot prices.
Okay.
Price, land cost. There, there are a lot of variables in that that even for us, a, a single house type
Right.
wildly different in one neighborhood versus another.
Okay, so.
The price is more.
Yeah. So, so the reason I was asking that, and I'm glad you said the two eighty six, and I miss obviously the community conversation, but is what we heard over and over is affordable housing, right? And I get it. That's not states and's business necessarily, okay? But is there any leeway or thought to conversation of a portion of the homes being? And I, I'm wrong because I can't think what Joe Fortier with Taylor Hollow did it with part of his apartments in Prices Fork. But some of them are like public servant or a lesser rate or a lesser cost? Is that something? Because to me, that would be a selling point for the people in the community too.
So that Joe Fortier project is subsidized?
Yes, and this is not.
And this is not, right?
Okay. Taylor Hollow, okay. You're correct. That's true. So, but I didn't know if states and had any wiggle room. And that's me being, you know, just a citizen saying, hey, I know police officers and teachers can't afford it. They just, I mean, and they're your professionals.
Yes.
And you gotta have them.
Well, and, and I'll share with you. So I'm on the Board of Directors for Habitat for Humanity in the New River Valley.
Okay.
And so I am wildly, you know, interested in affordable housing. And, you know, we just had a conference, we had our team meeting at noon today for the construction committee. And we talk about that a lot, right? Like, how can we use, you know, funds that are available to us to help buy down interest rates, help buy down, you know, the cost of the project? We're building though to market rate and we try, I was just sharing this on site earlier. You know, we try to capture that seventy to eighty percent price range that's kind of in the middle. You know, there are some opportunities such as Habitat and Joe Fortier's organization that maybe have an opportunity to go a little more affordable. But we try to hit the middle market as widely as we can. And that's why you see, you know, pricing from two eighty five to potentially, you know, some of those estate lots, maybe a million dollars. I don't know. The market will drive that, right? But so we, we talk about it all the time. We have an really a high level focus on how to make these projects more affordable. But to be a hundred percent honest, if you look, a lady Monday night asked us how we came up with this figure. And I didn't get a chance to answer her question, but if you go to the National Association of Home Builders website today, they did a study in twenty twenty one. The average new home has ninety four thousand dollars of regulatory and excessive code requirement costs built into it. And that's the national average, right? It might be slightly different here in our area, one way or the other. But when just the stormwater regulation and the additional building codes add that level of cost to that home, honestly, getting to two eighty five is a real challenge. That's, that's not an easily attainable figure. And so I, I hear you and, and I would love to be able to, to have a solution to that part of the problem. But as Steve mentioned, a lot of our housing is attainable, particularly for those maybe with dual incomes. And what happens is if we build a move up home for someone and they exit their current home, then that might open up a nice, you know, starter, more affordable home for that next person as well. So all housing helps, even if it's not specifically. Sorry, I didn't hear that comment.
Unless they're from New York.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Yeah. So I hope that helps answer that.
I do understand what they're saying, that there are median income in that area. There's, there's only a thousand of them. I mean, I, I, I feel them because, like, like I said, I live in Prices Fork, right? So I get it. I see what West, but I also understand a lot of good with West Hill too, right, has come. It's influx of families and community for the school. And so there's, there is good too. But it sure would be nice if we could just have a few places available.
Certainly continue to talk about that, yeah. But if, if you have any suggestions.
I wish. Yeah, I don't have that. I, I'd write a book and make a million, but yeah. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
The old Prices Fork Elementary School, albeit it's, it's subsidized. But we have a couple of friends who live there, single older folks in basically a two room efficiency. And they're absolutely beautiful. They're wonderful. They're perfect for one person. And I don't see that product anywhere in our county.
Yep. It, it's, it's rare. And, and we've, we've had the opportunity. We've worked with Joe on that one. Uh, we're working on the project Travis mentioned for Habitat in Blacksburg right now. But again, you know, C H P is, is the biggest affordable housing developer here in the New River Valley. But, you know, they take a lot, you know, it takes a lot of subsidy to get that to work. And most of those are high density, you know, either high density townhome projects, but most of them are apartments. So, you know, that, and we weren't even going to broach that subject on, on, on this pro, this property. But yeah, when you start getting into those rental rates and you can start looking at voucher programs and things like that, that's where it starts to make some sense. We actually just got a property rezoned in Blacksburg. A s- s- small forty or forty two units, but, you know, proffered at a percentage of those, about nine units would, would be able to be affordable and would be able to use the voucher program if we couldn't get V H D A or F H A funding. So there's some creative ways to do it, but it, it works best if you've got some multifamily, you know, that's, that's built into that.
Steve, you spoke about this on site, but if you would mention it in the, to the whole group, and that's the issue of building materials and facades and so forth.
Right. And Travis, Travis spoke to that. You want to?
As far as the type? Yeah. So if you look, we've got a pretty wide product matrix. It's about twenty different house types. If you look at the whole portfolio, every house type has three to five elevation styles. Some of them include stone, stone water tables, stone facades, things of that nature. As I mentioned before, our intent today would be to use maybe the James Hardy product on the outside of these homes. But again, that's market driven. So if we find that that doesn't satisfy that price point, then we may, you know, look at vinyl siding as well. And honestly, they make some really nice quality vinyls today that are much more advanced than what you would have seen back, you know, in the eighties and nineties. So that's kind of the intent, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just real quick, I know we're, this is starting, probably taking longer than we thought, but I do wanted to follow up on one thing in your application specific to the initial projections for water and sewer. You had like a hundred and eighty five thousand G P D. That, um, and then the letter from the P S A was very vague as well, and it only referenced one parcel. So I, I think just by looking that at face value, that saying that water and sewer are available to that single parcel is not necessarily addressing the full picture on water and sewer availability for the entire build out. So I, I would ask that you kind of follow up on that and have a little bit more meat on those bones for the next meeting.
Yeah, we, we had asked for the availability letter, that's what PSA had provided us. Um, I didn't even notice, honestly, Mr. Cole, that it just had the one tax parcel listed. And I know that wasn't the intent, it was for the, for the whole project.
Yeah, I don't know if, if they were just responding to that one 30-acre parcel versus.
He, no, he, he wasn't because we, we had talked about the flows. He had already seen, you know, we had given him some preliminary, you know, calculations as far as what it was going to be. We have had some conversations since then, since the, since we actually submitted the application. We talked about this on-site. You know, a lot of the neighbors brought up infrastructure tonight.
Yeah, that's why I, I, I think it's important for that.
It is, so when the.
Nail down.
When the county purchased the 20 acres for the elementary school, part of that agreement was capacity would be, there would be enough capacity in the pump station for a certain number of residential homes on this property. And it wasn't 409, it was 100 or 120, something like that. As we have talked to the PSA, there has been no other growth in going to that, that pump station. You know, there's nothing that's happened with it. So they're going back and they're having, the county's having their, their engineering consultant confirm, you know, the capacity in that pump station itself. And what we'll either do is we'll either, and Mr. Cole, I know you'll understand this. When we've, in the past, what we've done with the county is we've used the VDH guidelines. Now, those VDH guidelines are, it's two, you have to count two people per bedroom. And it's 75, you know, 75 gallons per person, per home. And you, you know, in a three-bedroom house, that's six people. And that's why you get those flows so high. In Blacksburg, we use, I think it's 100 or 170 gallons per house, period. If we look at it that way, we just dropped from 184,000 down to 64,000 gallons. So Chuck's taken a look at some of that. And we also, I also talked to him and mentioned maybe we get some actual flow data coming off of West Hill. It's the same product type, same buyer profile. So get some actual flow data off five townhomes, five villas and five single-family, and let's use that as opposed to this 30-year-old VDH guidelines.
That's a good way to do it, if you can use some representative data. But also at the treatment plan, I don't, don't know if there are any concerns about treatment capacity, but there's a big truck stop getting pumped over to the.
Right. We haven't heard of anything, but I would assume that would come with whatever PSA.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you all.
So I'll go back to, to my original question. If there's any other criteria that you would like for staff to look at in our analysis? I've got written down the emergency services component. To Mr. Cole's point, we'll continue to work with Steve and with public service authorities more data becomes available so that we're giving you the most up-to-date information in our analysis.
I think the public likes to hear about the school capacity.
That, that is in there. We have several different data matrix, data matrix that we're going to be looking at with school capacity. We've also got from the schools some projected enrollment over the next couple of decades that we'll provide to you.
And Justin, also, I, I noticed that a lot of the, the public concern was about just the, the number of individuals that this development at full build-out is going to bring. And there's a lot of, I, I think misinformation about what a typical number is per household as far as residents per household. And if we could have some information that is based on some factual representative data. National averages, like the, the .6 school-aged children per resident, that is a national average. And I have no idea if that would apply to this community. By the same token, the number of residents per household, I think we need to try to, as best we can, get a good estimate of what would be expected, not just use textbook numbers.
Thank you, sir.
Any further questions?
So without any objection, we'll move forward with a public hearing date with the commission on April the 9th. Thank you all very much.
You obtain a motion to.
Move we leave work session?
Okay, we got a motion, second to leave work session. All those in favor, signature 5% aye.
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed likewise. We now look at old business, we don't have anything. We've moved to liaison reports. And first up is Mr. Todd King, is he still with, yes?
Being late, I don't have nothing to report, but I would like to let everybody know we're starting to work on our county budget. And it'd be a good time for everybody to come out and give us your opinion about it.
Okay, sir, thank you much. And Blacksburg planning?
Nothing.
Nothing, okay. And, and with Chrisburg, I don't have anything further from last week. And Radford planning, Mrs. Simpkins?
They canceled their meeting on Monday, so nothing to report.
Okay, and tourism council, Mr.?
No meeting, no report.
Okay, Mr. Workmate is not here. And planning directors report, Ms. Hopkins?
The only thing I have for you this evening is to remember to RSVP if you can attend the planning commissioner's training that will be held here on April 16th. Be sure to let a member of staff know if you are attending that so we can get you registered, please.
Can we RSVP now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, well. Let's have a motion to adjourn. Second, all of them in favor, signify by saying aye. We are adjourned. Good meeting. It was April 16th.